Good, alright. We'll call this meeting in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, next up is approval of the agenda, are we going to amend that?
Please.
Um, like to amend, um, the agenda to include board appreciation month. Are we good with that?
So, so moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Uh, give it to Michelle.
I think I was last.
Alright, it's been moved and saying to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, motion carries. Uh, we'll move right into the board appreciation month, is that?
Definitely. But principals are all here yet.
Oh, yeah, you might.
Okay, well, let's move that.
Yeah, we were at the safety.
But honestly, they're supposed to be here for the ARC presentation, so they just need to get here, let me go.
Well, where do I start?
Oh.
I'm sure we're all here.
Oh, there's three.
She knows when the guys came back.
Where are the girls?
They're preparing the.
Oh, okay.
But they still have to be at our presentation, so they gotta come either way. You wanna talk about communities and schools?
You wanna start there?
Can.
Okay, if we, we'll move, uh, we're gonna go ahead and start with communities and schools, that'd be information item number two, take it away.
Uh, so, communities and schools is a program that we have at Housel Middle School. Uh, we have a site coordinator there who helps support our students and families of, with a lot of different, um, for a lot of different needs, they came earlier in the year and did a little presentation talking about the different things that they do to support students, food insecurity, supplies, helping them connect to community resources. But about a month or two ago, they reached out to me, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yes, so my name is Robert Alibares, I'm the volunteer community, I'm with my manager for communities and schools.
So, Robert and some of the other folks from communities and schools came and met with Michael and I, Crystal, um, about a month ago. Um, they are starting a mentorship program, I mentioned this to you guys previously. And so the information provided in the board packet, um, talks about how the mentorship program will work, the training that the mentors would receive, um, we're gonna start kind of small. Um, we haven't started advertising yet because we wanted to make sure the board was aware, but it'll be adult community members that can volunteer, they'll have to have background checks and all of those things, of course, and there's training that Robert's gonna provide for the, um, for the folks that are selected, and then they would, uh, work similar to like Boys and Girls Club mentoring program, connecting them with a student who might be having some struggles, um, and then, and doing that during school time, so it's not an after, you don't have to come out, stay after school, or, and maybe like a lunchtime kind of connection. Middle school's gonna provide a place for them, uh, to meet with their students and, uh, build relationships and help support them, and building those positive adult role mentors and, uh, support for kids that might be having some struggles. Um, Robert, you wanna add some, do you have anything else you wanna add?
No, I think you would, would at all, like, it is gonna be school-based and I, I hold the mentors and all the volunteers down on recruiting. I do prioritize or, uh, communicate the point that we really are trying to meet with the students during their lunch hour, um, because we, we, we just wanna minimize the, uh, that time that we're taking them out of instruction time. And so ultimately, like I said, it, um, we are screening all the mentors and, um, I do, we do a background check on our site, and then, um, we also, uh, have the mentor, the volunteer sign up to, as a volunteer through Proster, um, Proster School District as well. So that way, um, everyone's aware who's entering the schools.
And because of our relationship, they're just starting with a handful of schools, they're starting the program, and it's something I'm sure is being done in communities and schools across the country. Um, they selected Housel along with a few schools out of the tri-city, so.
Yeah.
We're excited to be selected.
That is correct, so we are, um, starting with one school in each school district that we're partnered up with, and, um, mentorship program has been started also like in Spokane, also school district, and so, um, we pulled a lot of like our training from material from, um, program that's already developed and, um, highly competitive over there on that side. Yeah.
How many students are receiving services to communities and schools?
Um, in Proster, we're right now serving only the Housel Middle Schools.
Yeah, and they have a caseload, and so they send me data periodically, I can bring, so as they do their reporting, I can, I can share that data with you the next type, the next report I receive. This particular mentoring program, we're gonna probably start small with four or five kids and build up from there, um, build some success and, yeah.
Yeah.
We're excited.
Uh, so, y- you mentioned Spokane's doing it or has done something like this, what, what kind of, um, I don't know how to phrase the question really, but like, what, how, how well has that worked for Spokane School District? And can, what, what could possibly we see here?
Yeah, so a lot of, um, there's a lot of partnerships with like the university itself. Um, but most, mostly more than anything is really connecting adults to students, um, that gives me that, um, adult connection and just wanna build that trusted adult, I mean, their life. And so ultimately, um, what we're pulling out from them is really the structure or really the training of how to build, um, effectively. And when I say report that relationship, looking on what the students are hoping, how to ask open-ended questions, um, what are reflection statements, and those are the type of things that our mentors are being trained, um, in order for the youth to be really, to feel heard and, and feel like there's, there's a safe space for them at the school, or a trusted adult that they can confide in at the school. Um, and that is ultimately what, what, um, the, the mentorship program aims to, to serve here at the, at Housel Middle School. It makes a meaningful connection.
And communities and schools tracks data on each of their students, so they would, perhaps this would be a student that might be having some challenges that we would have data on around grades, behavior, attendance, those kinds of things, and so that would be tracked prior to them starting the program, and after, so we would know to see if the students improving in those areas and seeing more success.
And also you that are gonna be mentees are gonna be part of the student support coordinator table. Um, so aside as, um, part of the responsibility of the student support coordinator is making sure, um, developing goals and establishing, um, for making sure that they're, they're meeting their goals, um, periodically, and so that's just, like I said, um, another part of like just adding on to, to the programs and services that are already being provided. Um, and we do have a check-in form, um, that the mentor is required to, to complete, and so that form is, um, they, the school staff at, at Housel Middle School do have access, and when they say we have it, I identify two point of contact with at the school, just in case our student support coordinator is not there in it, for whatever case emergency, the mentor can go to, to, um, other point of contact as well. And so like I said, uh, um, that Excel form, uh, the other two point of contacts at the school, um, do have access to that, and so they're, they're aware of everything that, that the mentors are doing with the youth.
And for instance, like if the student disclosed something that they needed to share back, you know, a safety concern or something like that, um.
They also work on supporting not just, um, it's social emotional well-being, but also really getting to the root of a, of a problem, whether it's food or shelter or something, and really trying to do that. And then, while communities and schools may not have the resource, they know the resources to send them to or to be able to be the bridge between those resources. Um, and so you often don't find those problems until the relationship has been.
Sometimes you have kids too that just need, like, teachers are one thing, but they see teachers in a certain way, or they're building administrators, and, um, so it just builds a, like another, um, caring relationship where they feel like someone is interested in their success. Um, and that maybe is a little more, um, subjective because they're not like, okay, you didn't turn in your homework, you didn't, you know, like those kinds of things that you, you might have a teacher get after them or a principal. It is just more of like checking in with them, seeing how they're doing, giving someone to talk to, talking about what they're trying to work on and improve at school, but it's, um, yeah, so.
Yeah, and both that, well, one important point that you, um, is the, particularly part of the check-in form is, um, are there any concerns brought up? And so when I say concerns, those can just be basic needs, um, or, you know, they just need school supplies floating, and so ultimately, the student support coordinator or the school staff there will just, um, take care of that situation.
What's the process for selecting and then developing the people who are gonna mentor?
Um, so we screen that, basically, um, the ten commitment, obviously, is the, the big, um, point, and making sure that they're being, they're available bi-weekly for just a minimum thirty minutes of time. Um, and then I go ahead and collect references, make sure that there, um, there's no concerns of working with youth, and like I said, along with that, so I, um, I develop or I get, um, I conduct the background check through the Washington State Patrol, um, website, and so after that, then I go ahead and provide the trainings, um, for the mentorship onboarding, and like I said, that's where I train them on the, on how to build rapport with the youth, what I do on that during the time of, um, safety concerns, how to differentiate between, um, just general safety concerns and those immediate, um, immediate safety concerns and what to do in those different situations. And, um, once they go ahead and get trained, and I go ahead and coordinate a meeting read between the mentor and the school staff, that way it's a warm handoff, and they, um, they are also aware of who was entering the building as well, and, um, they get to know the mentor before they get, the mentee and mentor get, get paired up together. Um, after that, then, if all, if everything checks out, we, during that meeting read, we, what's it called, um, conversate on what is a good schedule or what the schedule's gonna look like, how often the mentor's gonna come. Um, we also, uh, discuss about emergency procedures as well. Um, but yeah, so ultimately, um, we do have, we only allow our mentors to be eighteen and older, and for those that are closer to eighteen, it's just be mindful to pairing them with someone in elementary age, um, not, not so much close to, to their age as, because then it can be a conflict. Um, but yeah, like, but I don't foresee that, is, um, that happening, uh, my husband knows very well.
Does the, usually like, they get to know the mentor, and then do they kind of determine appropriate mentee to pair with that person?
So that'll be in coordination with the building leaders as well as our, our site coordinators, because they, they also have a process too to give feedback if maybe that isn't a good match. Um, and then the students will come, we already have a caseload, our communities and schools is a caseload of students they know would benefit from the mentor support services, so won't be ha- hard to find students that could benefit for sure. Um, so, you know, we, we're gonna start advertising and putting out, trying to get people, and of course, board members are welcome to apply.
So, under, uh, excuse me, under your mentorship guidelines, uh, it says materials and training will be provided before engaging with youth. I'm assuming that's materials and training to individuals that you've vetted?
Yeah, so once they come through the mentorship oriented, or the mentorship onboarding training, um, we also provide them with materials or tools, um, whether that's if they wanna create a vision board, um, whether that's what, um, if they wanna do some arts and craft manual, um, type of activities, then we go ahead and provide those, that type of material, um, before, that way they're coming ready and, and something to do with the youth, um, in hand, and they're not paying out of pocket, it's either, um, or in years.
I think if we could talk about a little bit how students qualify for the services to communities and schools, I know, I believe oftentimes kids that are homeless.
So they could be, um, it's really students that through our, the different avenues in the school, they find there's a need, they could self-refer themselves, sometimes parents come in and ask for help, counselors, principals, um, teachers, seeing that kids have a need, whether.
Fears even.
Things, it is things like food, they help, you know, find if there's, you know, food insecurity issues, finding a home. They've helped, I've had, um, people like, they become homeless and like overnight, they, they need to be in a hotel, and we're trying to find a way to help them pay, you know, find resources in the community if they're struggling, maybe with paying for power, water, those kinds of things. Um, maybe it's connecting to the appropriate either mental health resources, maybe it's like medical, like connecting and finding a place where they can go to have a family doctor, there's just, you know, it's a calling and communicating with parents if their children are coming to school, because that's one of the big focuses, is we, we can't help the kids and they can't learn if they're not at school.
Yeah, so especially there's, we, we don't just focus on, we, we serve all youth. Um, as, and then if they're gonna come onboard in our caseload, um, it's just making sure that our student support coordinator has a conversation with the parent, um, and kinda has a conversation about the type of services that we provide, um, which is both setting, um, monthly or, monthly or weekly, uh, check-ins, um, as needed by, by the entity, once again, it's just determines on, on the circumstances of the youth. However, oftentimes, we need to meet with them, um, but yeah, so ultimately, we are open to, to, um, the whole school, we serve the whole school, but we do have, um, we do serve, have a caseload as well.
It's really about limiting, limiting the barriers that are, um, preventing them from being successful.
Would it be possible to get, uh, just to be able to look at the, the training materials?
Yeah, definitely. Uh, my book, uh, you know, like.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
It could be a really good thing.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, thanks for coming, appreciate it, thank you, Deanna.
You're welcome.
Now we're gonna go right back to the first item, was board appreciation.
Sorry, I had to relax, my building to grab some stuff for ARC and then. Um, we have a video to share with you guys, um, from all of the students and staff in the district.
Oh.
And, um, we just wanna thank you guys for all of your time and effort that you put into supporting all of our schools and our districts.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Get on your screen.
Really only likes my PowerPoint, so.
Try stop, share.
By the way, you can troubleshoot, we can give you guys skips.
Aye.
Oh, there it is.
Got you right here.
And staff members want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work and all the things you do.
Thank you for providing us a safe space to learn.
Thank you for leading us to a successful future.
Thank you for helping us empower and inspire each one of our students.
Thank you for helping us thrive.
From all of us, thank you.
I'm gonna say something really loud.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing to lead us to a successful future.
From all of us, thank you.
Well, that's awesome, I appreciate it.
Oh, guys, and, uh, thank you, school members, they're my little TKs, and I'm like, school board members, and every time, thank you, school members.
They did, they, they did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
To have them put them on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, well, that was awesome, so thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, so moving on to another, uh, information item number one is the ARC presentation.
So, I'm the principal, and I have some teachers here today, I just wanted to introduce, um, the teachers. Uh, there's a part where they're gonna talk a little bit about how the, um, how ARC has impacted their classroom and their students. So Jessica Cardenas is here, if you wanna wave, she teaches out at Wittemore. And Kaylee Holloman, right here in the front, Julia Johnston, Tatiana Quijano, and then Gilberto Munoz here at the middle school, so the ladies in the front are at high, Tatiana's at Wittemore and Beto's at the middle school. And so they are giving their time tonight, so I appreciate them being here. Go ahead and do the PowerPoint, which I noticed you had the one with the wrong date, but that's okay. It was the right day last week when we were supposed to do it, wrong year, but it's okay, if that's the only mistake I've, it's a good day.
We can work through it.
It's a good day, so go ahead and skip that first slide. So, a year ago, um, a couple of years ago, we started adoption process, and we adopted, um, we selected, uh, American Reading Company ARC for our K five program, that was in twenty twenty-three is when we implemented. And then last year, we went through adoption process, and then the middle school also selected ARC, um, and they have implemented here in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Go ahead. So these are the units, so, and we had some questions about, um, so there are science and social studies-based units. So the students are learning, reading and writing with, that is the vehicle. Um, so you can see for this one, there's a lot here to see, but you see it in English and Spanish because we also have the Spanish units. Um, and so like, for instance, in the first grade, they have animals unit, you have family stories, which is more, uh, social studies, and then plants. And so that's how they're kind of spaced out, they're selected based kind of on the needs of our district. So, um, you can see that that was a question someone asked about, um, science, I think particularly, but there's ELA, uh, or social studies and science units, so that's the K five, um, units of study. And then the next slide is the middle school, and so they don't have Spanish units because they, um, don't have a SLA, Spanish Language Arts Program. So those are the, the units for, um, for the, for the middle school. Go ahead. But I can keep talking.
Uh, so, the, we worked on this a few weeks ago, so it's probably a little discombobulated. Um, one of the big things that research talks about and also the curriculum, uh, is building knowledge over time, that's the vocabulary, content knowledge, um, and, and it's sequentially, sequentially built from kindergarten all the way now through the middle school, um, with that vocabulary and, and the content, like you saw on there, there's the science, sciences that are built. Uh, you'll see some examples of that when we hand out some, um, books here shortly, um, the, the science aspect in those, because we just finished those units a few weeks ago. Foundational skills in K two, uh, and then integration of reading and writing, um, with complex text. So, uh, you're, you're gonna see a format of a day a little bit later, and within, within that format, the students are getting a mini lesson in the reading, um, then there's time for them to dig into the research. Every week they have, uh, inquiry questions that they're looking for and responding to, um, and then that ends up building their chapters throughout the unit. Uh, the reading lab time is when you have the small groups, uh, it's strategic rooting, um, strategic grouping, not guided, which is a little bit different, the strategic grouping is based on individuals or the split, one individual or several individuals that have the same, uh, skill deficit, I shouldn't say deficit, but, um, uh, a skill that they need to work on in a particular area, you might have a group of them, and the teachers will talk about that a little bit later, where, uh, those groups change. Um, the old guided reading groups, the, the frequency in that change wasn't happening as much, and then, um, not addressing specifically what that might be blends, that you have three kids in your class having trouble with these blends, specific blends, that, that group within would meet, working on those, until they, uh, they're proficient at it and then moving on. Um, inter- intervention toolkits is part of that reading lab time, that's what the teachers use in their small group, those are the materials that they're using in their small groups. ARC updated it this year, is, it is fantastic. Uh, it, it, it addressed several holes that we saw the first time, uh, when we went through it. Uh, it's even more intentional on billing the phonics, um, looking at the diagrams, the blends, uh, and some of that activity, I think you've been expanded with that. Um, and then the writing component, uh, which is really, really big, um, if, if you go into the hating work, because, um, so, so writing is the last piece of that, if students are then able to apply it in writing, there's a mastery level, um, with that.
So I did give, put this at your spot, this is the kind of more depth information for those six areas.
So, the, the hating talks about the, um, surface level, which the research on that, the surface level, that's where the mo- majority of education is spent, um, and you're going deeper, and that's when you start to do some analysis, but then eventually when the transfer happens, it's in writing.
The bottom, we just, uh, put that there, you might have seen it before, this just shows the levels, kids talk about their colors, um, like, oh, I'm white, or I'm black, I'm orange, I'm in purple. Um, you can see as it goes across, when they're in the lower grades, there's, it's broken up more, but once they hit the third grade, um, they're, they're in that color for the, for the year, working towards different goals or power goals, and then the reading materials go all the way up to what is considered gold, which is eleventh and twelfth grade level reading. And we do have some students, middle school students in gold. Kate, go ahead, Blake.
This just gives you, uh, it, you, you know, it's difficult to decide what to put on here, because the scope and sequences can be broken out in, in a very specific, that's always available if you wanna look at that in a deeper. This is kind of shows you the, the, they have four units across, uh, this is Kinder, I believe.
I can't see it from here, but.
Um, so the first unit is just, it's, it's assessing the kids, it's building the routines in the classroom. Um, and then we shift in to you, unit two, and kindergarten ends up being all science. It's the only grade level that's all science all year long, um, so that you'll see this. Uh, the other, the other, uh, grade levels, um, they have some literature studies, they'll have a science unit. Um, there were some social studies units that were available, but not necessarily in Spanish, so we, we had to work on that and, um, come up with some new units for that.
Go ahead, Blake.
So this is a literacy block, this is roughly about a ninety-minute literacy block, so you'll see that there's a mini lesson. Um, there's usually some complex texts, complex text, meaning we're introducing that text to students through the teacher. That's how we're scaffolding that, and so we're using the context text. Um, the teacher's using that complex text as their whole, whole group in, uh, mini lesson, and then they go into the reading lab time, which is the independent reading, and you'll see the small group work at that time. Um, this is that one-on-one work or small group work where they're conferencing about power goals. Students, each student has a power goal assigned to them based on the assessment, and that power goal, as soon as they master that, that power goal, they move to another power goal. And there are several power goals that are in a level, and once they master those, those power goals in, in a level, they're ready to transition to the next level. Uh, writing is the same, you'll start off with a mini lesson with that focus, then there's a writing portion. Um, and we're not quite to the second, the second reading lab portion, this is the main thing that you'll see in our classroom, so this is a document that I kept.
Okay, I'll like. So this is actually a picture from the middle school, so the teach, there's a, it's very, there's a lot of material, so there's a wide range of books for students to select from. Each one of those little bins probably has twenty to thirty different books in it, the kids, so kids are able to choose, um, different texts from their level, and they can choose, actually, they can challenge themselves and choose a book of their choice of different levels if they want, is their interest. And that's what they do, um, a lot of their independent workout, where the teacher's giving them some individual goals and things that they're working on. Go ahead. This is video. This is a video.
Hi, Stallions love reading.
Make sure, uh, every day, students who read their favorite books have a chance of like feeding them some.
One time we spend reading, we spend reading.
We're together to make it happen.
We read thirty minutes a day at school. As we've...
Oops.
We work towards our power goals.
We have also set a goal to read for thirty minutes every night after school.
We mark the time we spend reading on our reading log sheet.
Each fifteen minutes of reading counts as one step.
So we read two steps at school and two steps at home every day.
Students that are on the doorstep, they want to play with them at all, and they help us all with each other.
So Heights did this little promotional video.
We read one step. You can go ahead and fill out the first line, which you're gonna wanna put the title, a date, the amount of pages you read, and a guardian, make sure you did it at home or teachers, make sure it's in at home. If you read more than fifty minutes, you can go ahead and fill out another step. Another step, and each step is fifteen minutes. You could go ahead, fill out another step, or another one. Here are some tips for how to make your reading time really count. Mark out the stress. Turn off the TV, music, phone, video games, or anything else that will take your attention from your, away from your book. Listen or watch a student's book. Talk with your students about their reading. I stress that.
If you don't have access to books at home, you can bring home the school books in your blue bag. Just make sure you bring them back so others can enjoy.
Go Stallions! Go Stallions!
So Jody's building, they, Jody's, uh, building made that last year?
Miss Sher. I think it's actually Miss Sher. Miss Holloman created it.
Awesome. Um, to, and so they could get the information out to parents and promote reading with the kids. Um, so it was just a fun thing that they've been able to share. So they didn't make this just for you guys. They'd already made it. We added it to the presentation. Okay, go ahead, Blake. So, uh, one of the questions we had is about teaching, the teaching of foundational skills. Well, how are we teaching foundational reading skills to students? And so there's a couple of little videos here that just show a, a lesson with a small group of students. So this is kind of what Kevin was talking about in their small groups, or they might be working on something in particular that these students have in common that they need to, to learn or to improve on. Go ahead and do the one.
What's your mouth doing when you say, "A"? Okay. What is, you said, "A"? Oh, where's your chin though? Go like this, like, put your chin right here and go. Put out your chin. It's going down. So today, we'll talk about the long A sound. I want you to remember what happens when you... And how it's done. Remember, A can have two sounds. They can say "tap", and A can say "A" in words. Today, we're going to talk about A being made by A, another letter, and E, okay? So, long A. So we're gonna say some words, okay? I want you to say the word "king".
King.
King. Let's say all the sounds. A. How many sounds do we hear?
Three.
Three. What do we hear? Let's say the first sound. The second sound, A. Mm. How many sounds?
Three.
Three. And where do you hear the A sound?
In the middle.
You hear it here at the beginning, in the middle, or at the end?
In the middle.
In the middle. Okay, let's say this word. Let's say the word "make".
Make.
You just, is that one that you worked in today too? And then have the long A sound, huh? So if I say "make", let's say the sound. Mm, A. How many sounds?
Three.
And where do you hear the A sound?
In the middle.
In the middle. Mm, A. And your chin also goes down when you mean.
And then the other one's just the second part of the...
Say it with me. And I'm going to write it, and then I'm going to give you the chance to do this all, so, okay? Well, if I'm gonna make the word, if I want to spell the word "make", right, that's one, you just practiced. I'm gonna go, mm. What do I hear at the beginning? Mm. What do I hear at the end?
A.
Let's say, mm, A. So what sound is K, what sound is that?
Ch.
Okay, but what sound is the K spelled? Say this one, that's what the K is, right?
I'm sure.
So now, how am I going to make the A sound? Let's come here. Let's do it together. Mm, A. Well, what spells A in the name?
O.
A, and there's another letter, A. So I'm gonna flip the A here and the E. Mo.
So, uh, so teachers are working in small groups with kids throughout the week based on what they are, what their goal is. So these three particular students, this is something that they're working on. Okay, go ahead to the next one.
A. What's your mouth doing?
So, just a little more information about toolkits. Um, those are, th- this is really a, a key to students growing and reading. Um, they're aligned. The toolkits are all aligned to the signs they're reading. There's, um, students are grouped by skill, not their reading level. Historically, you know, you went to the owls group, or you were in the apples, or whatever. Uh, we, we, kids were being grouped by their reading level, but we could be reading at the same reading level at third grade, but have different skill, skill challenges that we need to fill. So if we're just reading at that level, but not focusing on what we don't know, then we just don't see the growth. So that's a big change in ARC that maybe historically you didn't see. You're focusing on skill-based groups instead of reading levels. Now, they're still reading at their reading level and challenging themselves in their independent reading, but that's not what the toolkit or small group intervention time is about. Um, there's extra support for readers. There's direct instruction and differentiated support during that time. And then there's toolkits for students in both English and Spanish. Okay, go ahead.
I just put this in here just so that you can see. This is, um, updated foundational skill scope, scope and sequence at the different levels, um, with the phonics awareness, where they're working on the syllables, the rhymes, onset, um, being, and medial. Uh, but you also just kind of see the progression as it goes through, and, and the colors change, which are the different levels. So this is the yellow where you start out, into the green, and then blue, the red.
Okay, go ahead. I think you did that too.
So on top of those toolkits and the, the levels that you saw before, they also have phonics and word study books. Um, and are you gonna, are you gonna talk about phonics and word study books?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you gonna talk about phonics and word study books? It's, well, it's built into the thing, so, uh, along with the... Okay, okay. The morning, the morning message is built in, so the teacher is able to select a morning message to also address, uh, specific, um, word site, uh, skills that they're working on, suffixes and things like that. And the morning message that the teacher writes to the class and they go through, it highlights some of these. And then it's connected to the work that they do in the word study book.
Okay, go ahead. So this is our tales from the classroom. So teachers are just gonna talk for a minute or two about kind of their classroom and how the programs implement, in, impacted them and their students. And Jessica's at first. If you come up, because the, the microphone thing is that black thing, so if you at least come and stand closer, then, then they can hear you online better.
Jessica, you're first.
Right now, thank you. So hello, my name is Jessica Cardenas. I am a first grade teacher out at Witstran Elementary. Um, so I'm just gonna, I wrote down a little bit what I wanted to share, so it sounded coherent and I'm not all over the place. So, um, I'm here to share a little about my experience with ARC toolkits and how I use the toolkits, as well as the ARC School Pace in my classroom. Um, as many of you may or may not know, um, students are given a screener um, early on in the fall when school starts to kind of narrow down a possible starting point when we do start assessing students. Um, from that, uh, screener, um, that level is kind of pinpointed. Um, we can go to that level in our manuals, and then from there, there's different skills that are assessed. Um, students can demonstrate proficiency. If they demonstrate proficiency, you kind of keep going to the next skill or the next level. Um, small groups in my classroom are ever so changing. Um, I continuously use the data that is based on, um, the notes that are input into School Pace. When you meet with students, um, there is data that is gathered on those students. Um, so with the School Pace data as well as observation from when we do meet in small group, um, I can arrange students based on the skills that they need to be work on. Um, and like mentioned, yes, you can have multiple students in, let's just say, a two-green reading level, but that doesn't necessarily mean you put all the two-green together. Within that, that level, you can have two or three different groups based on the skills that they are working on. Um, so students are provided with skill cards, um, at the current level that they, um, are assessed at. Um, and, and on that skill card, um, will be different things as far as what a reader at that level looks like, things that they are working on, um, and the skills that they need to obtain in order to exit that level and move on to the next one. Um, so sharing the end goal with students, um, you know, keeps them engaged and want to keep going. Um, the little graph that was shown in the, at the beginning, at the earlier slide, that had, um, you know, Kinder first level, first grade, second grade. I tend to, you know, every time I meet with students, when they're being assessed, I show that to the students so that they can kind of see what our end goal is, because by the time we exit first grade, they should be at a one-red. Um, so those are the things that, in, how I use, um, the toolkits in my classroom. And like Kevin mentioned, with the, um, morning message and word study notebook, morning message and word study notebook are skills, they are, um, skills are addressed to where the students should be at that time. Um, if there is a skill that I see most of my students are struggling with, then yes, I will bring in that skill to our morning message. Um, and then the morning message is followed up by the word study notebook, which then they transfer into, you know, writing and being able to practice words um, with each other or with a group. Um, I would just wanna point out, one of the weaknesses that I did have, um, that I wrote down, is, um, the continuous changes with ARC, um, either to its core or to small group. Um, I know this, the beginning of this year, there was some changes, and it just kind of made it difficult because I know, um, material hadn't been ordered, I think, for us teachers. And just being able to get that material in a timely manner for us, um, makes it a little bit easier for us to be able to continue to provide that support for our kids, um, and being able just to be on top of, um, you know, the skills for them. The one-green and the two-green, which is where my, uh, most of my students are living at at the moment, has a lot of those foundational skills that are very important. And with the previous, um, manuals that we had, they were not there. Granted, we did have the online version and access, but it's not always the same to have your computer there than to just have the little tent manual setup and just go from there. So that is my experience with ARC and the ARC toolkit in my classroom. Do you guys have any questions?
I'll just say, we asked the teachers to share some things that were working for them and something, any, and if, something that's a challenge. And so there was an update in the foundational skills toolkits by ARC. Um, and so it was available online, but it's really hard, especially when you're working with littles. You're not working online. So, um, we ordered new materials, uh, the updated versions, which are much, much better for them. It costs, it costs a little bit of money, but it was really important that they had those because they were much better and improved. And her commit, you know, uh, companies do that. They work on an improvement, make changes, so.
And I know that there's looking at, um, there's rubrics and things like that coming out for next year on our course, so just throwing that out there, yes.
Probably the same for all the teachers, I would assume, but like the range of levels that you have available, even though you're in first grade. You have a lot of your kids be at Kinder level, and then like how, what if you have a third or fourth grade level student?
Um, so that's...
To all, all the different grades?
Um, so it, that was actually my situation this year. I have a student who is in a second grade reading level. While I didn't have the toolkit, I reached out to our, um, coach, and she was able to provide that toolkit from either what she has in her, um, in her office. So I was, and we do have that ability to be able to get toolkits from other teachers. We do, we can share, share them. So yes, we do have access, um, and manuals as well. So the, the lessons are, I mean, the skill is different, but the way you would run the lesson is, you know, the same for...
So you feel like it's set up in a way that like you could pick up the second grade toolkit and, and know exactly what to say and do?
Yes, it's, um, it's based on the skill. So, um, I, I guess for myself, I've also taught second grade, so I know some of those things. Um, so I feel, I, I feel very comfortable in picking up, um, you know, even when I first started, we had, um, kids at a Kinder who can't, I mean, I have one who, you know, is learning how to identify letters and sounds. Um, and right now I have one who's in a two-red. So we do, you know, use all of the levels within all those colors. I do use them in my classroom. So yes, I do feel comfortable doing that.
Haley, do you know? Whoever wants, you guys are kind of in the same lines, so you come together if you want.
Okay, so we wrote out what we're gonna say. Um, I'm Julia Johnston.
I'm Kaylee Holloman.
Um, and so the way the ARC works in our classrooms is kind of like divided into two sections. We do whole group, and then we do, um, small group time, which is like the toolkit. And so I was going to talk about, um, what I really like about the whole group time, and then Kaylee was going to talk about the small group time. Um, so I wrote, during our whole group reading time, we teach four units throughout the year. The units include a Magic Treehouse Literacy Lab, a weather unit, traditional tales, and marine life. Each of the units are interesting and engaging to our students. The marine life and weather units integrate science, which has been really great. Um, we're currently teaching the traditional tales unit, and one of the things I especially like about the unit is that we get to read traditional tales from around the world, and students get a chance to learn about different cultures. Um, the ARC curriculum has a leveled library for each unit, uh, with books ranging in levels from kindergarten all the way up to sixth grade. Uh, the leveled library allows all students to access the same curriculum and have success with their third grade standards. Um, the summative assessment at the end of each unit is a writing project. And we end our units with a publishing party where the kids have an opportunity to share their published writing, um, and they're always really excited to share their hard work with each other and give each other compliments and feedback.
Um, and then to talk on the small groups, and I said, uh, the ARC small group lessons have been extremely positive, um, or have had an extremely positive impact on our students' reading abilities and the reading culture in our classroom. Think, uh, both of us talked about one of the most impactful components have been the ease of individualizing small group instruction to meet student needs. We've been able to use the ERLA assessments to identify individual student power goals that kids are working on, not only when they're being pulled for a small group, but also it's something for their, them to focus their independent reading on as well. And we also talked about the fact that students are able to get both an extension, um, as well as fill in any gaps in earlier reading skills. And you had mentioned asking about opportunities to extend, and even if we don't have the physical books for that, like if we're in third grade and we don't have access to the orange physical books at that moment, students also have access to the library online as well. So they're not limited in that moment. They still have access to those while we go and get the physical copies. Um, we also talked about that there's been a lot of excitement among students as they reach their power goals, and they can see themselves progressing. Um, as educators, the program has allowed us to track student progress towards their power goals, and it helps us clearly see next steps and then, um, gives us lessons to support them in that. Um, and I think for both of us, our favorite aspect of small group instruction has been the major increase in students' engagement. And I think for both of us, our favorite aspect of small group instruction has been the major increase in students' engagement. The leveled library makes finding engaging books at each student's independent reading level incredibly accessible. Uh, we talked about the difference between our incoming uh, group the year before we started ARC and then this year and just the general love of reading and the excitement to read independently increased dramatically. And so that's been really powerful to see. Um, and yeah, so overall, I think those are kind of the main positives. Yeah, we talked about one area would be continuing to support um, staffing in the classroom, especially during small group time. And a lot of us have access to parent support. And I've also been able to have parents come in as well and just having more adults who are excited to read with students, talk about their power goals, has been really positive as well.
Any questions for the ladies? Okay, Tatiana? Tatiana is a, is a, teaches a dual language class, so she might have a little different perspective for us as well.
Hello, my name is Tatiana Quijano. Like she said, I'm a fourth grade teacher for Western Elementary. For me, uh, the ARC has been a great tool. I started uh, teaching the bilingual classroom without a Spanish curriculum, which was hard because I had to find all the materials, translate um, the resources I was finding in English. And sometimes they don't transfer really good to the skills you need to teach in Spanish. So ARC for me has been great, it has been amazing and the kids are showing an interest. Um, they love it and to me, the small group um, toolkit in English and Spanish has been just um, one of the great resources I have in my hand and the kids can have a hold on to because they know where to go for the toolkits. When I said, okay, it's time for uh, my A group. They know to go and sit down with me, they know where the material is and they understand it because part of the first unit of the ARC is to teach the kids a structure, the routines that we're gonna go through and stuff like that. So um, it's been a positive um, experience for them and for me as a teacher. The curriculum also challenges students to think and dig deeper in reading. I might use a, another curriculum, we're using that thinking map. Um, the ARC with a thinking map are combining so good that all the um, cortex the kids have been having to read. For example, we finished the unit one with narratives and unit two informational with animal adaptation. And now we're in American historical fiction. These thinking maps are helping them um, dig deeper when they read the books from the ARC and they have to um, answer those rigorous questions that the ARC gives them. And um, also it allows them to self-reflect because the ARC show, um, gives them rubrics they can um, use throughout the reading and the writing part as well. So they can self-evaluate themselves and us as a teacher, we can also evaluate them. Um, also the unit um, are very interesting for students. One of their favorites is American historical fiction and animal adaptation because they love learning about animals. Um, one of the things I also like about the ARC is that it, it aligns to our priority standards. Um, that is something good for a curriculum to have. Um, but there are some weaknesses in this curriculum that I think um, probably um, they will be addressed or probably they will be updating their system. And it's that the toolkit is great because it's in English and Spanish, but the Spanish version only goes to a white level, which is a third grade level. So that means that the fourth and above um, levels, um, the teacher has to find the resources or try to, um, on the backside of each toolkit, um, there's um, some advices of what to do with the kids during some of this, on, on some of the skills. But it's not the same thing as having the, all the skills that need to be learned for that grade level. And well, of course, I, I have kids in fourth grade that are reading at a black level, so, which is fourth. And I have to find those resources, like if they're learning about prefixes and suffixes, I can't use the English um, toolkit because the prefixes and suffixes in English are different in Spanish. So that's one of the weaknesses. Another one is that the curriculum is not um, how, um, I would say time-friendly. Um, sometime, especially for me as a bilingual teacher, maybe I'm speaking for myself only here. The, when teaching the English, the um, when we're heavy lifted in English, um, the English lessons go well in our reading blog and our writing blog. But when I have to bridge in the Spanish part, that's when it gets a little bit complicated because, because of the time. So uh, whatever the heavy lifting language is, whether it's English or Spanish, the bridging language is the one that gets a little bit difficult managing on how we're going to um, teach um, that part, like, because each language has its cortex in order to teach the skill and the, and to bring the kids um, up to the standard we need them to meet. So um, like I said, um, as a bilingual teacher, I have to figure out how to fit in the Spanish, um, the Spanish bridging without having to rush the students or trying not to fall behind the guiding pace that the ARC has. Mm-hmm, but overall, to me, it's an amazing, like I said, curriculum because before we didn't have one, now we have this. Um, and it is something that I can use and improve, not only myself, but the kids are improving themselves. And you can see it because they're moving through the band, um, to address a little bit of what you said. Um, about the color band having kids in one level and others at a other extent of the level. In my classroom, that happens. I have kids from, uh, I'm a fourth grade teacher and I have kids at a ye- uh, yellow color, which is a kindergarten color, and I have kids at a black. My yellow color are, uh, is um, a child who's a monolingual stu- a student who just came from Mexico. And so she needs the foundation. While I have kids that are at a black and I have kids at a blue and I have kids at a red. So um, these toolkits are just so amazing that I, the structure is easy to follow as a teacher and the students are able to enjoy it. Um, the activities are fun for them, um, and they're interactive. The kids get to do most of the talking during this, um, my um, small groups. And I just have to kind of guide them and prompt them, so it's, it's amazing, I like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question for you.
Yes.
While I cannot have the Spanish toolkit available after third grade?
Um, for Spanish, no. Uh, it, it has, it has uh, the book and I can use the online version, but the online version doesn't have the activities or I, I have books I can use from the uh, library, but I don't have the lessons or activities that can be done to address certain skills that need to be addressed during that very level, like the other colors too.
If, if they, they develop them, we would be able to.
Yeah.
You know, do you know if they are developing?
Um, that I don't, that is a question I will ask to my rep. And find out. They're developing things all the time, the curriculum itself has been being, well, kind of in a constant state of development.
Most of the reading curriculums that we were looking at, the English comes first and then the Spanish comes second.
So they just have to catch up.
All right, um, my name is Alberto Muñoz, but I go by Beto and I teach sixth and seventh grade ELA at House Middle School. So this is our first year with ARC, so it's definitely been a learning um, experience. Um, but a few positives that we've noticed in the ELA department is that the students are reading and I think that's a big thing for middle schoolers. Um, a lot of them look forward to that independent reading time. Um, I think someone touched on it, but the sixth graders coming in, they had ARC last year, so they already knew kind of what to expect. So they, you know, we would screen them and they'd be like, oh, sweet, I made it back to this color. So they kind of already knew where they were at, which is kind, which is, which was nice. Um, another thing we like about ARC is that it's really uh, personalized, right? So we get to really know where our students are at and what skill level they're at and what they can work on, what can, what they, what they can improve on. Um, and another thing that we talked about that we liked at the middle school level um, is I would really get to collaborate quite a bit together. And um, our trainer that we have, um, we had one at the beginning, he's not there anymore, but now we have someone else and they're just really knowledgeable and they're really open to questions. And I think Deanna's mentioned it, they're always like, um, reach out to us, you know, send us emails, message the company to see like what you, what, what we need to improve on, especially for the secondary level. Um, but yeah, we're definitely seeing a higher interest in reading, which is, I think, like I said, really important for middle schoolers. Um, and just, you know, the units are interesting for the students and there's, like you guys saw the pictures. The picture you saw was just sixth grade, but for sixth and seventh grade, we get a ton, we have a lot of books in our class. Yeah, twice as many, so each unit has its own set of books. Um, so there's a ton of books for students to choose from. Um, we're seeing growth and the data is there, so we could go in, put in our evidence, give students points and kind of see how they're growing throughout the year, which is nice to see. And um, students can also see that as well when we have one-on-one conferences with them. Um, something that I like implementing, I think Jody's uh, video showed that they have a reading log, like a paper version, but um, ARC also has an online version that I think is more tailored towards like secondary, middle school level and my students like tracking their reading that way. And I know some teachers at the middle school are attempting to use that, so students could see what they've read throughout the year and it's there online. Um, they could track their steps for them there, so they could see how many steps they have, which is nice. Um, one challenge that we have been coming up with at the middle school is just time. We have fifty-five minutes Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then forty-five minutes on Wednesdays. So um, we just feel like we don't have enough time to really um, you know, get into the toolkits and really um, hit all the points that we need to hit with our students.
Thank you.
Is that, um, just going back to Tatiana, cause I, I know it's Spanish, but that, the, the time thing's come up twice now, is that something you guys have talked to ARC about?
So ARC can't really solve our time problem, that's our problem. Um, so at the elementary for Tatiana, because she's teaching both languages, she kind of needs more block time than they, just in, if we're only teaching English. Um, Michael and Crystal worked really hard on their schedule last year, trying to find a way to extend the language arts time because they need more time. And we're going to be working on that again, trying to find a way, maybe with some adjustments or changes in staffing or how we're using staff, because they need more time. Um, the toolkit piece is that they just don't have enough ti- they're not having enough time to do them en- enough in their classes to help kids um, with the growth and it's, they have like just under an hour, they have an hour and a half.
But something we've talked about and we talked about the last training was that on Wednesdays is what we're gonna, we're using it as like our reading lab days. So that would be the days that we would do like a mini lesson with the whole class and then we would use that as small group time. So as, us as teachers, meeting with small groups and doing the toolkit lessons with students during that time. So that's kind of how we worked it out to kind of make up for that time, so we can make sure we're hitting everything we need to hit in the curriculum.
Go ahead.
Some schools are, are looking at modified block schedules, different kinds of things like that to allow that. Where you see the um, partnering with science or partnering with social studies. So like if you can partner with those classes and build that time, um, allowing the science teacher possibly to be doing a, a more true science experience, but while they, and then you can trade students during that block time so that they're getting that. We really just have to think outside our box and figure out how we can improve, improve that so that when they're reading or in for, with informative texts or whatever they're doing in a different way inside curriculum, in, instead of it being standalone, we're gonna work on reading and we're gonna read To Kill a Mockingbird and this is what we're gonna read, this is what we're gonna read it. Let's read something that is in partnership with something and that's why they talk about the book sets, right?
Um, can you talk about the, the library just a little bit? I mean, are you, so middle school, are you encouraging them to read out of the ARC library? Or is it more of just trying to get middle schoolers to read books?
We're, we, I mean, we have all the books in our classroom, so when we have independent reading time, um, it's really hard to. So it's hard to send them home with the middle schoolers, because obviously middle schoolers and sometimes they forget or they lose things. So we try to share books amongst our classes, so I like, I have two sixth grade classes and two seventh grade classes. So I encourage them to just get the same book that they've been reading from the tub. Um, I think Tatiana or, I think Tatiana said the routine also really works really well because students do know what level they're at and what their power goal is. So in our toolkits, there's books provided in there, so students know like if they're in orange, then they'll go and grab the book that we've been reading in our small group. Um, but they have access to the library in our classroom and they also have access to the school library also.
And digital.
Yeah, digitally, and we don't care what they're reading as long as they're reading. Yeah.
Do you have about how the feedback works and how often you can adjust?
Feedback for?
The testing within their own program, I think that was part of the big push when we approved it, that there's a constant kind of feedback coming back to the teachers and the testing.
We'll, I'll show you some data, you can talk about it, but I'll show you, we have some data coming up here really quickly.
Yeah, so every time we meet with a student, so every time I meet with a student or um, I do like a whole group lesson with them. I know it's something, like I said, we've talked about like during our PLCs and we talked amongst ourselves as teachers. Every time we meet with them, we kind of look at what skill they need to work on, their power goal, like they talked about, it's a skill that they need to um, kind of make sure they're proficient at. And there's like a scoring level that goes with it, it's like point zero one or point zero two. And if they've met that goal, then we put it in there on School Pace, which is where we input our data. And then you can see if someone is like at an orange level, which is about fifth, was your fifth grade level, if they've met their power goal and they get all their points and they'll be like five point zero four. So they're progressing towards going towards purple, transitioning towards purple, which is a sixth grade reading level. Um, but we have access to online to put in data and kind of track um, what we're meeting with our students on.
I was wondering that seventy-five to ninety-minute um, recommendation, is that consistent through all the grades that ARC recommends that block of time?
That's their, the, their program recommendation, yeah, so whether, if it was.
That was an elementary example.
But.
So I was wondering like.
Yeah, it's the, yeah, it's just kind of a standard.
And you have fifty-five minutes?
Fifty-five minutes, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, and then forty-five minutes on Wednesdays, yeah.
But they need more time.
And is there support from home or to get support? I mean, this may not just be a question for you, but do you feel like you get support from the parents? And I mean, are they able to take this home and, because if, if time is an issue, they can do some of this at home?
Yeah, I think at least for being a first year teacher, for sure, like the sixth graders already had that foundation. So I think the sixth graders had more of that routine, the seventh and eighth graders are, it's, it's new for them also. So they're kind of like, this is new, they're kind of, you know, trying to get used to it a little bit. But I think I, the rest of the parents saw what their levels were um, at our first conference. It was kind of like a, oh, like, this is where they're actually reading at and this is like what skill they need to, need to uh, work on. So I think for some parents are definitely um, is support. But I think, like I said, it's new and it's new for the middle schoolers also, so they're just trying to get adjusted to it. I think next year when we get a new group of sixth graders and our seventh graders have been doing this for a couple of years, it's just gonna keep getting a little bit, a little better at progressing.
At the elementary level, um, I'm pretty sure it might be the same with the middle school. Um, as the parents during conferences, they get a skill card, the same skill card that kids get in the classroom. In that skill card, it shows what a rigorous question can be asked as your child's reading at home. And on the backside of the skill card, it shows what skill your kid needs to be learning during this level. So we explain during conferences, um, this is where your kid is at, we would like your help on this area. Uh, whatever question you have, you may ask us, email us. And the kids themselves too, when they do a work with us in, during small group, they get to take that home and show to their parents, so the parents can see how is it that they're working with that skill in the classroom. So if they have the time at home, they can also work in the same thing. Um, as the video um, you guys saw earlier, kids get to take a blue bag of books home. And in those book bags, they take the books at their level of reading. Um, and they have to, they're encouraged to take books at their level and to take one or two books that challenges them, that is at a higher level. So that way, when they're reading at home, they can read to their parents or their parents can read to them, but also they can challenge themselves by practicing the skill at, um, and moving on to the next level.
All right, thank you. Um, there's, oh, you have one teacher, Joanne Schnobach, um, who was not able to be here. But if you go to the next slide, there's a little statement there where she really highlighted how um, reading has, the change in the program has impacted her as a teacher and being able to work with struggling readers. I'm not gonna read it all word for word, but she really talked about how the whole group and small group has been really helpful. I thought the last paragraph was really, it was something I think that warmed her heart. At our last conference of the year after teaching ARC for the, for, the, the first year, I had a parent ask, are you the teacher who taught my daughter to read? Of course I was, her daughter was a struggling reader, at least two years behind. And through ARC, she grew two years in her reading ability last year. With ARC, the parents see the growth in their child's reading ability. Hey, go ahead, Blake. This is just some examples of student work and the principals, some of them brought some examples of student work. And just, just gonna hand it to you, we'll keep going, so you can look at, these are um, like, end, like, final projects that the kids do after a unit. Um, it's, there's some pretty cool. Um, it's, there's some pretty cool stuff. We have stuff from the different levels. Of elementary. And they, they definitely need these back because the kids are expecting them back. So. We need to collect them back. Yeah. Because the teacher's like, I have to have this back. Like, so they, the, the kids.
Couple of mine, because the assignment was for the parents. The teacher sent home the. Project for the parents to score.
Oh, there you go.
She's asking for a fact.
So we'll let you hold on to those, but we'll keep going, cause I know this is taking us a while. Um. The next thing, this is one of the big pieces that um, we've talked about, the next slide, Blake. So this is example of, of the whole school data that the buildings can see. I can see it, the principals see it. Um, there's a lot of specific data to every student, but I'm obviously not gonna show that right now. Um, so the middle school is just getting started, but you can already see some growth in some of the numbers as they shift over. They can see exactly how many kids. Are at an emergency level or a red level, how many kids are at risk. So, and how many kids are proficient. That's the big one. It's very hard to see. Again, middle school is just getting started and they don't have any end of year data, but I wanted you to see what it looked like. Go to the next one. This is our K-five elementary um, data wall for English. This was last year, twenty-two, twenty-three. And so if you look at the first row is kindergarten, you can see there's like four boxes, a red, a yellow and two, so all go up there. This is better than he tried to describe with all, with all these colors. Um, but you can see that at the beginning of kindergarten last year, and this is November first, because the teachers were learning. This is where our kindergartners were. We had eighty-three kids in emergency, thirty-one at risk and twenty-one proficient. And then this is the data on June first. So you can see how the kids have shifted across. It's very visual. And you can see the growth, like this row here and now this row is shifted over here. Um, uh, there's a little zoom in. Go to the next one, Blake. So, um, this is the Spanish data wall. So we have, we get data in for English. The students are learning English and learning in Spanish. Um, so it's the same information, but I think probably the thing you'd like to go one more, Blake. So this is actually this part blown up. So at the beginning of last year, we had five hundred and thirty-two kids in emergency. And all ten hundred, by the end of the year, there were only two hundred and ninety-four. It's still a lot, but we had last year, at the beginning of the year, a hundred and fifty-one kids are proficient at the beginning of the year. By the end of the year, they had four hundred and sixty-eight. Hey, that's English and in Spanish, at the beginning of the year, they had twenty-two kids who were proficient and then in the year they had one hundred. So this like a gale of goosebumps, because it's like, yes, we have still kids, but even these kids right here that were, may have been in emergency and may have stayed in emergency, they're still growing. So if you go and look at an individual kid, you can see that they're growing. Okay? So I thought that was important to see. We had talked about data where you guys could actually see that's real time data of what kids have. You know, they have done and that, that's what this is. And we, I can go and look at it any day, anytime. They can do. Next one.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, go for it.
That was, that was.
That's just a.
Started in November.
Yep.
First implementation. Learning how to use toolkits. That was last year's day. I can tell you this year, we're into the second year. And our biggest, which we're working on, we're brainstorming different ways. The kids are moving faster than what we can keep up. And i- it is really neat to see. I've gone through just about, and I know the other principals do this too, but. Um, just the management of it, uh, making sure that they're in that right power goal, when to move them out of that power goal. Because as teachers, we want to make sure that they've mastered that skill before we move on to another one. So the hesitation is a good thing. Um, but they're also ready to go. So it's, it's developing a system within the schools that we're monitoring that system and, and updating it and giving time. So that the teachers have time to really dig into those students and make sure that we're progressing. Also with their, and I think that's gonna come, because this is fairly new. They've only, our teachers have only been doing this for a full, full year up to this date. And um. Like I said, it's, it's a nice problem to have, because the kids. Are moving and we just, we have to figure out a better way to just keep up with them.
I, I think like Joanne's example of a kid moving two years in that one year. We, we weren't doing that before. We weren't doing that before.
I don't mean, but like with Joanne, the thing that was um, the most heartwarming for Joanne is that this is a veteran teacher. This is a successful veteran teacher. And so when she's saying, I now know, like when I'm moving kids, like how to move kids. That's powerful, because she's successful, like, and um, and so with her review of Arc, it, it means a lot.
And we've always done conferencing. We've always done conferencing. The difference, I think, is one is system, it's systematic. It, it's, it's following a progression. We're not creating. It's already done. We can monitor that.
Intentional.
It's very intentional though, and specific to those individual students, which has been a big shift. For us as a district and, and even mindset wise.
So um, it's also one of those things, when you talk about like Betos wrote, talked about stick fifth, the sixth graders. There's one less transition piece we gotta figure out between fifth and sixth grade, cause they're moving into the same kind of program. So that's also helpful. Any other questions? I know that was long.
Is there, so is there necessarily um, an assessment or is that assessment being handled through these daily lessons? I mean, so it's not really a.
It's not a test. It's, it's your test.
It's the best assessment you have, because it's real time.
Yeah.
It's not benchmark where you're waiting, you know, three months. So it's in real time where the kid is at. And we're addressing it and then moving, moving on and moving levels. So if you're looking at it, it's really. Um, the points that the teachers have talked about, that, you know, so if they've mastered a skill. It, it depends on the skill. It could be six hundreds, it could be fifteen hundreds. Depending, obviously if it's fifteen hundreds, it's a pretty important skill for that student to have at that grade level. Um, and then they, after so many of those points, then there's a cold read and some prerequisites they have to do to transition into the next level. To make sure. Um, but those are the points that are showing the growth other, within the system on a day-to-day basis.
We give them a, the initial benchmark at the beginning of the year and then throughout the year, four times we do um, level checks. So teachers go in, well, I don't know how, I run it in my building, but teachers go into other teachers' classrooms and pick like five kids and just do a quick little read with them. And make sure that their level seems about right. And then they're able to document that in there, so that the other teacher knows. Helping to build consistency and making sure that all of us are testing the right way and monitoring students and moving them up. Did I hear you say you have this data for every, like every student?
Right. So I, we use, yep, we showed the big data, but we could go and look at, I could go, I could go right now and look at any individual student. I could look at a teacher's class to see how the class is growing as a whole, where their groupings are, which levels they're at. Um, Kevin, my, all the principals can, can do that same thing. So you can monitor, we can monitor our students' data and see what's happening. We, yeah, you can look at any individual student. You can see what the teachers entered as far as their, their power goal and the progress they're making, their points. That's very, it's a very powerful system.
See the last time that the teacher um, updated it, updated on a kid. So we can pull up one document in a classroom and it will tell you like the last time that the teacher went in and did some type of update on that kiddo. So uh, like our expectation is that within fourteen days, there should be something in there. And so that's a quick little check for me to pull up a classroom and be like, hey, you have a kiddo that's like thirty days out. How come we haven't touched this kiddo yet? You know, what's going on? You know, so that's a good little check for us to be able to monitor that and make sure that these kids are getting addressed and, and being met with.
Um, as, as a district, you guys feel like. It's being updated or there are certain individuals that here, I'm, I'm beginning to go back to the old Skyward days as a parent. And it used to drive me insane, cause stuff would not get updated. I mean, are you having those same issues or? I mean, cause, cause the da- data is only as good as the data that's in.
And, and that's, I mean, that's, that's exactly what I told my teachers, right? Like we, we know that if we are meeting them intentionally with that power goal and we're monitoring that, that these kids are gonna keep growing. So if we're not monitoring that, we're not checking back on that, then you just have a kid that's kind of sitting. So we want to make sure that we keep monitoring that. Um, it, it's been a, it's been a shift, a change for our teachers, um, especially cause everything is on the computer. And so that's been a big change for people. Um, and they time. You meet with your kids, you have your little small group, you're working on those skills. And then you go directly, like my teacher go directly to another one and then bam, they're in science or they're in math or they're headed to lunch or wherever, you know. So time's an issue, because they're meeting with those people and then, then they have to go in and input that information into the system. Um, and those are just kinks and things that we're working out and trying to figure out how to make our systems better, so we can support them.
But, but teachers in, in general are doing a good job of.
Yeah.
Keeping their data up.
Yeah, we meet once a month. We just met yesterday as a entire um, K-eight system. To, and we're doing, like, we'll come back next month with our data, like, are we checking to make sure that we're consistent throughout the district? Uh, so it's not a educational uh, lottery. And the data goes forward. So they like, Betto can see what my fifth grade teachers put in. So that's, you know.
Starting over, not knowing. Yeah.
Yeah. We've, we talked about that with I-ready, I-ready has the diagnostic test. You have the benchmarks for the year. And then it ends and you start all over again. Not with this, that you follow, it continues with the kid. It will go all the way through the middles.
I love seeing all this science and history and the language arts for children too. I bet that's way more exciting for kids.
It's a great vehicle for them and for reading and writing.
The kids love it. They're so cute during their like um, little presentations after they're done with their writing and they do that, you know, like share it out with the whole class. And they're so proud of it and excited to share that. So it's been fun. These are some really cool samples of work. You're right, Diana. There is a long way to go still, but it's pretty impressive to look at the data and see how far just.
Yeah. And if I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't do this year's on purpose, because we're not at the end of the year, but we can't, there's, there's checks. The goals also move up. So um, the middle school, when you get into the upper or the, you know, those upper grade levels, it's like the, there's only one. One year, like you're in, you know, say orange for the whole year. It's a little bit different at the elementary, but. It's, it's really cool to me and I, that also for me is I can see it. Like you, I don't, they're not just telling me about it, like, oh, this is what we're doing. I can see it. So, anyway, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Oh, Brian Bailey.
We don't use this in high school, but how do you? My elementary student knows exactly where she's at and color. I just texted my wife and said, what color reader is Lolo? And she texted back immediately and gave some feedback on how she's gonna improve that. Uh, she's very adamant. She's a very active reader. And then my middle schooler has read three novels so far this year, which is three more than he's ever read.
Um, we will be um, sharing information about the high school um, program as well, but we're gonna, we're, we're gonna give him a little more time. There was a lot of background, the, the elementary had a lot, middle school kind of came along for the ride, cause they're learning, it's new to them. But we're gonna wait till maybe a little later in spring, maybe April, before we do the high schools. So they have a little more time getting through it and learning more about it. So. Yes, ma'am.
I have a first grader who started kindergarten with the school district last year and couldn't read at all. And he's now reading chapter books. He's a first grader.
That's great.
That's good news.
We, we have her here for testimonials and for, and for.
And what the kindergarten nurses are doing this year, or even last year, is amazing. And that's where we've talked about. That's where we have to close the gap.
Yeah.
And when we can do it earlier, the better. Cause I got to excuse it. Like Jesse was talking about this monitoring piece. That, that daily monitoring, I got, like I told myself, that that gap is either getting larger every day, that you don't know and not monitoring. Or you're shrinking.
There are multiple levels of feedback for us as leaders, for the teachers and then for the kids. And my son is a lot like Mr. Bailey's son, not an avid reader. And he was upset that he hasn't moved up the level that he believes he should. So last year, would he have known where he is at? Maybe. Would he have been pushing to be up like that, that internal motivation and internal driving, knowing where they're at? We haven't ever seen that before in years. So, but the feedback for all of us is significant.
I think it's exciting to watch how, mission through the oven, you guys have been talking about the curriculum. And I think, I know it's a lot of money and I'm hopeful to see what happens when we start updating the other curriculum. And can bring everything else along. I think it's soon that we can track and see what's happening and see the correlation and it's working. And that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Can I just, the, the RTM up there, those are students who are read to me. So that means that they don't really have the skills to start accessing books.
Oh, I was just trying to find it up there.
It's a purple all the way to the left.
You're, you're talking about kids that are coming in that don't know how to hold the book right or turn pages.
Don't know this is the cover or yeah.
All right.
Well, that, any other questions? No, I, I appreciate that. It was a great presentation. Thank you for coming and staying for it. And I, you know, if you could pass it on to the, the teachers that came too. Um, so I appreciate it. And you could really see the pride and a lot of the work that they did at such a young age. So.
They love those books.
Yeah.
Like, and it was, but it's.
Did anyone sign in?
Uh, yeah.
So thank you.
They worked really hard. They're very, uh, yeah. It was Heather, but she's, she cannot ignore.
I just wanted you to know you have no citizens.
Oh, you're scratching?
I don't know.
Okay.
Like that was too long presentation.
Then I will, uh, anybody else uh, online in the room that wanna address the board? All right. Hearing none, we will move on from that and go to student board reports. Yoshimi.
Um, so for ASB, we're doing the wish week, wish week. With the leadership class and went through, uh, which is basically us picking out wishes to grant for wish week um, in the auditorium for a day. So it's a really good um, week. Like last year, I got a jar of pickles from my friend, just randomly. It was pretty fun. Um, and we're working on picky, we're working on, we know a new mascot costume for, I don't know. Thunder, yeah. Uh, but I think we are, we're between two choices right now. We just need a pick one. And then we have most of the ASB and leadership class going with um. Going to, to the Johnson's event in Madawah, I think it's February second.
Thank you. Caitlin?
Um, for sports, it's mainly districts that are coming up and there's a game, I believe this Saturday that's home for basketball. And a swim meet is coming up.
I'm gonna add to that. Friday is home and Saturday is in Grandview and it's important because it's the uh, coaches for, are.
Coaches against.
Coaches against cancer. Sorry about that. And it's a dual partnership. And part of that money is going to our teacher who is in need that we have already done earlier in the year. And so um, both ASB groups are partnering, which is really fun, because it's our rival, right? And so it's really fun that both ASBs are working together to do that.
Dylan?
Um, for once, I don't have anything to talk about. Um, I just did wanna say that um, when I was here, when I like started last year. And when we were looking at the old numbers for reading, I was appalled. Um, and I said that we needed to start having different ways to measure growth, because I-ready testing. And um, whatever else is used now wasn't working, in my opinion. Um, and so I'm, I'm like actually excited to see that there's something new to that. There's real change. Um, and I like seeing people grow. So there's that.
Great. Thank you. All right. Moving on to action items, the HOSA donation request. Just don't care.
All right. Uh, I'm Mackenzie Lopez. I'm the health science teacher at the high school and the HOSA advisor. Um, so HOSA, Future Health Professionals is the career and tech, career and technical student organization for the health sciences uh, department.
Uh, department and HOSA competes in events just like FFA competitive events. And it takes a lot of money to take our kids to these events. Last year, we took twenty-three kids to state and took five to internationals for the first time. Uh, this was our, it's, we're brand new. So that was pretty awesome, but this year we have thirty-four kids wanting to go to state and that means there's more expenses, there's really good projects. And Caitlin will talk a little bit about that in a second. Um, and so that comes with the potential for going to internationals too, so we're in need of money and, uh. A wonderful person on our health science advisory board, um, Heather Morris is here to talk a little bit about. Um, a donation that, uh, her, the medical board from the hospital kind of has, uh, has proposed. So she wants to talk a little bit about that and where the money's coming from.
So, um, I'm Heather Morris, I'm a psych nurse practitioner, I'm employed with that Prosser Memorial Health. And, um, um, as we had in our last meeting, it was brought to attention that there is. HOSA needs a lot of funding to help support these kids, not only in their competition, but just in general. And so I was able to go to, um, a community clinics meeting, uh, which basically is a lot of our providers sit on. And, um, uh, one of the board members recommended that we provide a donation from, um. A front, a fund that is just for the providers. The medical executive, uh, committee met and decided to donate ten thousand dollars to HOSA from our medical board's funding, so.
So I'd like Caitlin to talk a little bit about what HOSA means to her, because she's been a HOSA kid for the last few years.
So my sophomore year, I didn't know anything of what I wanted to do, like to join clubs. And then I remember I actually joined HOSA and then found people that loved what I love. And so it was just like a group of people that. You got to be around that loved what you loved, and then last year I really got involved and I did a competition at state. And it was a display board on pediatric nurses and it placed six. And so this year, me and my partner are planning on doing it again on radiology. And one of our best friends too had gone to international, they loved it, had a great time and just everyone in the group is, the whole club. It's just a great club to trip. I don't know, I love the club and I love that it's just everyone gets involved and this money would really help us because now we get to go and we don't have to worry about. If we make enough money on fundraising and then what if you don't make enough and you don't get to compete, well now get to compete and get that chance to go to international.
So some of the costs involved are, um, paying for, for state, uh, would be a hundred dollars to register them. We had to pay for the really fancy Davenport, uh, grand hotel, which is where the conference is held, that's where we have to stay. Um, because that's the HOSA sponsored hotel, that's an expensive hotel as well. We add in paying for food, we add in travel just for state, four thirty-four kids, it does add up to a lot. Uh, we did fundraise seven thousand dollars with popcorn sales, uh, we did a couple hundred dollars in confessions, we have raised a decent amount. Um, but before hearing about this possibility for a donation, it was really gonna be, right, kids, you're gonna have to. Your parents and you were gonna have to figure out a way to pay for the remaining amount. And this was just kind of a, an opportunity that came out that we wanted to seek your guys' approval on.
So you're gonna have thirty-four kids go to state? Um, and then whatever, whoever makes it past that.
Me and each of that could go to international, so we could be looking at zero, but really a lot of, I, we have a lot of really good ones this year, um, so we could be looking at a lot.
Well, I think you guys do a great job with getting to where you, you've gotten in the past and last year, so, you know, keep up the good work.
Do you have an estimate for what just going to state is gonna cost for all?
State will cost for about the thirty-four, uh, what state will cost, it'll probably be about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars to cover food, travel, hotel, and everything like that for us. Um, so the remaining amount from this donation would potentially go toward international. Internationals is in Houston, so we got to pay for who knows how many, but we're hoping a lot of airplane tickets and hotel rooms.
And then if you sent, let's say, a bunch of people to internationals.
Yeah.
Do you fundraise more, do you, do parents pitch in?
Was our first time ever going to international, so last year it was like, in March, we found out wow, we're gonna go and. It was a, what do we do? What do I do for this office money? Because we had no money. Um, and we did get quite a few sponsors last year, um, and this year we're planning to do an, an event, like a feed event, like a taco feed event. And, um, we've talked about car washes, we've talked about, um, sponsorships as well. We usually always reach out to local businesses, I have the kids try and get sponsored as well if they're going to internationals. So, yeah, that is a lot.
And then traditionally for internationals or nationals and the other presentations, CTE helps also. Because we know it's, it's a lot of money for, for them to, to.
It's a lot of popcorn.
And not only that, they have to pay for it before they can fundraise, fundraise it all, so we, we really, we pay upfront and then they pay us back. As much as they can.
We hear motion on the Ho- HOSA donation request.
I move to approve it, HOSA donation request.
One this time.
Go ahead, your second.
Oh, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the HOSA donation request, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Good job, thank you.
I actually have personally say, thanks the organization. What a generous donation on behalf of the Prosser School District, we really appreciate that and. You know, we always hear about the needs in the medical field for whatever, and these people are our future employees of in our medical field, so thanks again. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is assemblies and family night with the reptile man for Keen River View.
Reptile man is up.
Do we have any?
No, I don't think there's any comments.
Yeah, the reptile man, we brought him in last year, um, and it's actually really tied to a lot of our arc units. Um, with the dangerous species and reptiles and things, and so. The kids were super excited about it, they loved it, we did two different assemblies just so it was a little bit smaller and they could interact more with the animals. Um, and then we did a parent night at the old high school and it was packed. Um, and so we have moved that to now the auditorium here at the high school, so that this year will be there too. And he kind of gives us a deal, he pays, we pay for the assembly and then it's like, kind of, three hundred dollars to do the parent night, so. I feel like that's worthwhile for our parents to be able to be part of it.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the, um, being family night with the reptile.
I second it. Been moved and seconded to approve the assemblies and family night with the reptile man, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
It's really not just a KRV family night, like, we're not really gonna do a family night with it, it's really just a community to bring. We'll, we'll make sure we get it advertised and let the whole community know about it.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, uh. Statement of understanding between the School of Social Work and Sociology at Walla Walla University. I didn't know they had a Walla Walla University.
And actually, I, my, my kids have three or four friends that that's where they got their dec, their social work degree. So, um, Walla Walla University, it is, um, yes, obviously not widely known, but this is akin to student teaching. So when we hired Maria Ayala as our social worker, she approached me, say, because of Heritage, saying, you know, like. I have, I, we could have, um, students, so like student teaching, but social work interns. And basically it's us providing, having some more mental health support for free. Um, and I said, okay, let's do it, so we were working with Heritage, Heritage hasn't had any students, but. A Walla Walla reached out and so this is what allow us to have students placed here and she's allowed to supervise up to two while they're doing their internship, so. Kind of win-win.
Are there, is there any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the statement of understanding between School of Social Work and Sociology, Walla Walla University.
Been moved and seconded to approve the statement of understanding between this. Between School of Social Work and Sociology from Walla Walla University. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is vouchers. And I did have one question. Now that, I gotta find my note. Can you explain the charge for West Benton Fire Rescue?
Uh, so it's CPR certification for our coaches and staff. They do all of our CPR certs.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers.
A second.
Been moved and saying to approve the vouchers, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to consent items. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Ever second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent items, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, moving on to reports, Delise?
Again, um, so I just have enrollment for January, um, we're holding pretty steady, we're not declining, which is great. Um, and in January, actually, we'll get our apportionment, um, hopefully by the end of the week. And it'll true up that forty-eight outreach, so we'll get, basically. What happens is when we get our apportionment from September through December, it's what we budgeted. And then in January, they true up what we are actually enrolled at. Um, so we'll get the funds for the forty-eight extra FTEs that we have for the year.
From September to current, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see that in our apportionment this month.
Okay. I'd like to expand on this not declining statement. In all of my t, learning, and, um, which is new in the world of superintendency, when you're working on budget, you always project. A quite drastic drop in enrollment. Um, at the high school level, it could be the typical, what you would use in, in prior terms was dropout, right? But movement, whatever, all these things happen, but there is something, it's, we kind of laugh why it always drops. But somebody doesn't go up, like they're, if they're not moving from here, why is another city's not going up if yours is dropping? It's just a slide that happens. For us to hold true, if, I, I want you to know when I sit in my superintendent meetings, we're like one of the few districts. In a very large geographical area that's holding true. So that's really big. Um, it's a part of what we're, we're not seeing that slide out and that's really big for us. Think if you look past, that's not been the case.
Typically, when you get that drop, would that have happened probably after Christmas break or not?
No, it just kind of dribbles through the year.
It actually does. It actually is a pretty, and it's not like this, so I do call it a dribble. But, I mean, but it does do this, and it's funny that it doesn't go back up and then it, next year it starts and then it dribbles again. And so to stay flat is huge.
What does reentry mean? Like, the, there's two students that enrolled.
They have left for some reason and are coming back. So that could, there could be lots of, um, things. Um, an example, they, um, think they want to go to school in a different district and they went and tried and it doesn't work. It could be, um, uh, medical, it could be a, uh, uh. Possibly a divorce or something and they go and live with the other parent and then they come back, I mean, it could be a thousand different things. But reentry means they were ours, they left and they came back.
Is there like a timeframe that, that no longer counts or?
I think that, that.
Like forever.
During the school year.
This school year.
Oh, within the same school year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And my other question was, is there any other time besides January that we get trued up on the budget or is it just?
Then it's true each month thereafter. So I think what it is, is that fluctuation also. Um, they start making sure that.
That's really right.
It's really accurate before they true and then they don't.
They give you any money.
Yeah, before they give you that big chunk, they want to make sure that it's true. And I will share with you, um, from experience, personal experience, they do take it away if your budget's too high and you're below your budget. So it is per, best to budget very conservative and get the bonus to your budget than being the other way and taking away.
Is it too early to see overall, like, how we are, how we're doing versus?
We will have a better answer for you in February, yes. Once we get this nut, money and we really get it in and we, and then we're gonna be able to. Let's just pretend our fuel budget, now that's a poor example in schools, but it's gonna be one I can use. We can say we projected ten thousand dollars for fuel and we've done six months, so we should be, have a percentage in it. And we'll know based on the percentage of that budget, if we're in line, above, below, right? So we'll have a better projection once we know where that revenue's at.
Trying to think of my, how to word my question, but I'm not sure how to do it quite yet. Um, but, you know, we're, we're roughly gonna be halfway through the school year, you know, by the, by February. Uh, when we look at December's financial report, it's close to half a year, correct?
No, and December's a third of the year.
A third. Um, at that, but we'll, will you be able to true those numbers up based on current moment for December, like? So our forty-eight extra kids, as we, they give us all that money back from September to December or to current. Um, will that reflect back on the December financials?
No, it'll just show increased revenue in January.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when I report my January financials in February, you'll be able to see the big increase in our apportionment.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
It's not like a retroactive report.
Yeah.
It's, it's actual.
Yeah, the month of we, we get.
Okay, thank you, any other question, Delise? Thank you, Delise. Deanna?
I'll be quick because I already touched on that tonight. Um, I started my foster leadership at a, my first class, um, we learned some things about some different organizations, really like our. Um, nonprofit organizations, we did some competitions, I'm not competitive at all, but my team did kill the other team. Um, the first, and we had our first science adoption meeting last night, really it's an introductory, kind of talking about the courses and stuff. We had some parents, parents and teachers, administrators. We're stuck, getting started, getting started, and that's all for me.
Thank you, any questions for Deanna? I think you can.
Saw you in the paper.
I've heard that, I just finally looked at it today. At least it was like a picture and not like, yeah, it was fine, thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Um, I've sent it out in front of you, it's, um. It's shorter than sometimes, but it seems like all of the energy has been really in one area, all about the levy. And so, I don't mean it, that it's all been in one area, but it's very, very, um, focused, I guess would be the word. Um, I have been, so far I've done presentations to Transportation, Whitstone, KRV, HMS, PHS, and Food Service. Um, we did reschedule hikes, so we'll be doing that, we've had two community meetings. Um, I spoke at city council last night, we've done McTeacher Night, so we're out and about, things are going on. Um, there's really nothing new in legal other than Ryan Rectonwall, which, which was our investigator with Clear Risk, is no longer with them. Which has put a kibosh on two investigations that we have going on, kibosh in the meaning that they've halted. And they're being reviewed by their legal team and if they're gonna release them or they're gonna have to redo some work and. And they're being reviewed by their legal team, and if they're gonna release them, or they're gonna have to redo some work, and it's really kind of been messy. Um. I'm hoping to have what their plan is at the end of this week or so, to try and wrap that up. Um, the typical things, Pulse of Proser was kind of funky for a few weeks, because you had Christmas, whatever, and then we decided to not put it in the paper and use our levy flyer in there. Um. I did send out an email about the one-use snow days, so we do have school on February sixteenth. Um, the gap training is wrapping up, um, we officially sent out our first building directory, it's in your emails. Um, it actually has names, phone numbers, classrooms, whatever, so we're super excited about that. I did share an email this afternoon, um, sharing about the passing of one of our teachers at, um, Heights Elementary. I was very proud of Jody Saban and her team, Justin, and, and a few of the, um, staff members. Who were very supportive to the teachers that were there, um, very professional in her actions and how she reached out to the parents and so forth. With pa- with the, Deanna reached out to the family and, and door Jody and went, and we got permission to release that publicly. They had gotten immediate re- permission to release it to the building, but we then got permission to release it publicly, so that email went out late this afternoon. Um, you know, it's, um, she had worked for our district, um, this was her seventh year with us. Um, and I should let Jody tell the story, but I don't wanna make you sad, um, but one of the last things that even the, uh, her husband shared. With Kim Bolt this afternoon, as she was getting ready for the, her operation, she was working. On little cards for all of her students, so she was waiting for operation. Her dedication to our school and our system was, uh, will be greatly missed. Um, guess what? When you walk out tonight, look at the camera on the front of the high school, it is now at eye height. And the cameras have been ordered and, or the camera phones are ready, it won't be long and this front door will be locked and things will be working in. Sean, I don't know if she's still here, she's, that left, um, but, um, we are super excited, we're getting ready to put the code in. For securing all these doors, lower door entrance, some super things are really going on. Uh, snow work, ice work, um.
Ears were burning.
I was giving you compliments for our, to work with our cameras and the phones and the.
Oh, yes.
And the, working on the quote for the doors, for the insides and so forth, um. The snow work and ice work, I, um, we did have one negative public comment earlier today about, um. We went to a two-hour delay and didn't switch to, to a full closure. You know, it is a, um, I think it's very important that I publicly share that it is not something that one person just makes. Sitting in my house, making a decision, Andy helps, Amy Cook helps, our local superintendents, we all communicate together. We have the E S D one oh five, which is the lower valley going this way, and then. Joe West and Pete Peterson and Kai B, we communicate what's going on in the hill and what's going around the corner. And we really try really hard, because families work in one area and, and go to, have students in another and whatever, we work really collectively. And I, I do want to share that the first phone call or first text messages come in about ten after four in the morning. And we collectively decide how we're gonna handle. So an example was today, um, we did talk about the temperature dropping right about. Six thirty this morning, it dropped a couple more degrees. And the, and the messages start again, do we close, what do we do, how long is it gonna last, what is it gonna do? So at our safety meeting tonight, we talked about messaging to parents that. If their particular area, like if you live in an area that's cold and the rest of the, the lower part of our area is not. Weather is an excuse to keep your child at home. If you don't, if your driveway's too long, or it's doing whatever, we wanna make sure that people understand, we're making the best for the whole of the thing. Not just one particular area, and it really is not Kim Casey ma- sitting in her house going, oh, I don't wanna, you know, it just doesn't work like that. It's a very thoughtful thing. I mean, I really have to thank Amy and the transportation crew, it is a challenge. To make sure the buses are clean underneath, we're making a decision when we were going to Othello to. We made the big decision to go to Othello for wrestling last week, it was really trying, it was icky right here. Actually, I was talking to you on the phone, and there is not a drop of rain or anything in Othello, and everybody's like, you're letting your kids go, and. I'm like, you guys, there's, once we get about seven miles, there's no weather, so it really is a collective thing, and I think that's very important for the public record that. That we really do take care of all students and our staff as best as possible. Um, and that was what is under the leadership part, I'm really excited also. Um, so I have some professional friends that I've grown up with in my career, as well as new. And we're really excited, we're gonna start spending some time together and talking about more alike than different, how do we improve? The work that we're doing in ARC, the work that other districts are doing in math, and how can we do this and. And really learn from each other, so that you don't make the same mistakes, right, or that if you can share your success, other districts can be successful. It, um, we joke about the competition between districts, and those are good rivalries and fun, but we really are in the best for all kids. And so that's really important, um. Uh, fiscal, it's been all about the levy, oh, I see a typo, budgework, budget work. Um, begins the minute the levy passes. You notice I'm saying it's passing, so, um, that work begins literally on the day that it passes and moving forward for twenty-four, twenty-five. Our goal, Deleese, Deanna and I, our goal is to bring a strong budget to you as early as May. Um. So that we're not deciding something, um, at the last minute, at Odark Thirty on the last day, that it has to be approved. We have a whole different concept that we're working on and then doing that. And, uh, upcoming levy work, um, January thirtieth is at Housel at seven P M. And January thirty-first at the community center at five P M, so that we're trying to reach out to different groups. So, there you go.
Thank you. Any questions, Ken?
I would have loved a two-hour delay this morning. I didn't get one.
That's what the other thing is, they think that I get a, I don't get a, I don't get a two-hour delay, we haven't, none of us do, we all work, so.
Okay, moving on to board reports, Sean?
Um, I don't have a whole lot, but I do, um, wanna put a little plug in. Some of you know I coach a small team of seventh graders in robotics, and they have qualified to go to state. So two of those students actually go to Housel, and will be going to Eastern on Saturday for them. Wish us luck.
Good luck, yes, that's great.
P M H also is one of their sponsors, so they're very generous with supporting.
Nice.
Your community, yeah.
Thank you. Frank?
Um, I don't really have anything, just, um. Thanks to Kim and your team dealing with all this weather and. Like you said, it's a lot of moving parts, so appreciate, you know, what you guys do, and also. The whole levy team, and, um, like you said, once I think it's possible, I'll be next. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right?
Um, just something I was gonna bring up, cause we don't get to, all the board members don't get to talk, except for here. Um, just a suggestion, uh, maybe during our meetings that we would open in prayer, like after the pledge. And, you know, I'd be willing to lead it, and, um, I just think there's a lot of things, a lot of issues that we. We, as a school, district, a community even, you know, we, I think there's, we could use some divine intervention. So, just a thought, and, and like I said, I would be willing to, to lead it, so.
Well, I think that's a great idea.
Well, I wanna turn maybe to lead a prayer too, can we, we rotate?
Absolutely, yes, I've even had some pastors that have actually said, hey, I'd love to come and, and do that, so.
I'd like to talk about it.
Yes.
Yeah, but absolutely, I won't go, my great grandmother will leave, like there was like a prayer, then there was like three verses for sure. And then the Lord's Prayer, and then some words, so perhaps, you know, maybe not like grammar.
I think, you show me, do you have a question?
I don't think that religion should be brought up in school. So, I don't think that should happen. I personally am atheist, and I don't think that should happen. So, I, I think that there are a lot of people of different religions, and I think that'd be disrespectful.
I would tend to agree, um. I think that that should be something that's excluded, I mean, there's already enough controversy when it comes to saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Why bring more controversy into something that doesn't need it? That'd be my two cents on that. And I would say that if that was a decision you would need, you would want to make, that you would also need to consider bringing in. Those who'd be willing to say a Muslim prayer, a Buddhist prayer, a Catholic prayer, any or all of the above. Um. For inclusivity.
I think that is part of the freedom that we have, that people wanted to say Muslim prayer, should be able to do that. And I did look in the, the Wasta book and look through the pages, and it did, it did talk about that. And, um, I, I think as a country and as with our, our constitution, we have freedom, we do have the freedom to, to do that. So. I don't know, it's up to you guys, I, you know, I wanna, like I said, I mean, if someone wanted to come and do a prayer, Muslim prayer, that would be. That would be fine, I just, I just think there's things that, that we need to, to, I just, I, I, I'm a man of faith, so. I believe in divine intervention, I think with some of the issues that we have, I think it would be very helpful.
I agree.
I do too, Frank, thank you for bringing that up.
So before school board meeting at six, we had our safety meeting at five, and there's a great discussion on what's gone on the last two weeks with the weather. And how the building was handling it, and Kim led that discussion, from Sean talking about security, giving the messages out, but I think. Five, seven different ways, the information is getting out and working on it with Parent Square. And how eventually it will all feed through Parent Square and working through that process, Andy was there to talk about. The order of which sidewalks are shoveled and salted, and who needs more salt, and employees that are dedicated and come to work at six forty-five in the morning, but. You know, process not shoveled at six forty-five, student areas get priority. Um, that at River View, the kids are out at recess on the playground, having a great time in the snow. And at the middle school, they are trying to keep, uh, snow from getting used as a weapon. Well-taken point, um, so great discussion, and then we'll be at the purity meeting next month as well.
A lot of students walk up the hill, is there any way to clear that?
Okay, so. As, as politically correct as I can say, the sidewalks are cleared for a reason. Um, because a teenager chooses to take fewer steps and walk up a steep hill is not how it was intended. It's too steep for protect technically proper access. Um, without handrails and so forth on the barrier and so forth, we talked about tonight. It really would never be cleaned because it's not been approved walkway. And so, I just am sure, so we did talk about some positive things in that way, and it led to this discussion. With the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, your badge will open the lower door. So you'll be able to go in the lower door, and our goal is to keep that from happening so much. Um, and the door would be open, don't quote me on the time yet, but approximately a half hour from school, till the tardy bell rings. And then if you're tardy, then you have to come up and go through the front door.
Would be able to like give brand starts to them, something special, so they can come in during like, uh, like mid-period, because.
Yeah, so your badge, um, at the top door. Will work anytime during school days and during school hours. The bottom door, you would be labeled in your name, would say running start. And you would then have a different clearance to come in, based on your schedule.
Awesome, all things that have to be worked out, it'll be a little.
But for example, we'll have a group, if you're in driver's ed, you get clearance from six to seven thirty in the morning, if you're in sports, you get clearance from. Five o'clock to nine o'clock or whatever. At night. We're, we're working there, we're gonna just keep this building secure.
That's kinda neat, actually. Anything else? Okay, um, I didn't have anything, but I did wanna comment that. I don't, communication has not been lacking as of late, a- and, and as of pretty much, I think, most of this year, I think. Um, whether it's Parent Square, I don't even know if they send it to our regular emails. But I probably got two different emails, multiple texts, phone calls, so I, I really appreciate. It sounds inundating, but it's, it's still very helpful, especially now that Parent Square, we're, we're actually getting information about. You know, the, what the kids are doing in school, or what assignments are up, or tests, or. However, however it's being used, I think it's pretty awesome, so I appreciate, um, all that and that, those efforts, so. Um, with that, any other comments, questions?
Actually, real quick, I do have a question. You're talking about increased communication, which I think we've heard loud and clear from the community that they wanted, and it just got me thinking. Do we like reach out to community members and parents like on a regular? Basis to get feedback on, you know, how are we doing on different things, or, you know, just, is there a feedback loop with the community? That up somehow.
Do you not hear from people when they're unhappy?
I mean, in a more formal way, yes.
So the, the indirect answer is this is my first year, and so I cannot speak of what was done in the past. Um, but we will do staff, student, and community outreach, but I wanna com- commend Sean, if she's still sitting there. We did open Parent Square to community members, so you can be a guest. Um, is it called a guest?
E S D delays enclosures, I think.
Or something, but you can ask to be, so, so you can opt in as a community member who doesn't have students in the school, or doesn't have anything. So you can get those notifications as well, um, but back to your formal question, yes. And if I'm doing a good job, we will have a way for the community to give feedback. Um, through a feedback loop, and our students as well. Um, most of your buildings do student surveys of some kind, but it will be way more formal than maybe what has been experienced in the past.
I'm curious, so, thanks.
Um, so future meetings, we do have a regular board meeting, February fourteenth, uh, right here. In the Proster Library workroom at six P M. No further business, this meeting's, thank you.
So make sure you tell your wife, she gets all Valentine's.